Good evening. Before we get started, I'm going to get some clarification. Do I need to let the audience know that we came, that we've convened a closed meeting?
Yes, it's still in process.
It's still in process, okay.
Come out of that session after the break.
Okay, very good. So, we were in a closed session. We still have more business to take care of, so during our break, we will go back in to hopefully finish that business and then come back out, and then we'll certify that closed meeting. That said, I would like to call to order the monthly meeting of the Newport News School Board for Tuesday, June 18th, 2018. On behalf of the members of the school board and our superintendent, I want to welcome each of you here and those who are watching. A quorum is present to transact the business of our school divisions. We will begin tonight's meeting with the invocation of the, invocation and pledge to the flag. Here to do the honors are two students from BT Washington Middle School, Ariana Reason and Dylan Tedmore. Is that correct? Well, first we'll have Dylan to come forward to deliver the invocation, and he will be followed by Ariana, who will come by, come up and give us the pledge. So, Dylan, would you please come forward? And before you get started, tell us a little bit about yourself.
My name's Dylan Tedmore. I go to Booker T. Washington Middle School. I'm going to the seventh grade, and I like to play sports. Today I'll be reading The Ballad of Booker T. by Langston Hughes. Booker T. was a practical man. He said, "Tell the soil and learn from the land. Let down your bucket where you are; your fate is here and not afar. To help yourself and your fellow man, train your head, your heart, and your hand. Your foresmorness alone surely not meet if you haven't at the same time got something to eat." Thus is Tuskegee. He built a school with book-learning there in the workman's tool. He started out in a simple way, for yesterday was not today. Sometimes he had compromising his talk, for a man must walk, must crawl before he can walk. In Alabama in eighty-five, a joker was lucky to be alive. Booker T. was nobody's fool; you may carve a dream with a humble tool. The tallest tower can tumble down if it be not rooted in solid ground. So being a far-seen practical man, he said, "Train your head, your heart, and your hand." Your fate is here and not afar, so let down your bucket where you are. Thank you.
Wow. Thank you, Dylan. Ariana, would you please come forward? And before you begin, tell us a little bit about yourself.
Hi, my name is Ariana Reason. I go to Booker T. Washington Middle School. I'm eleven years old, and I'm going to the seventh grade. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, you may be seated.
Well, thank you. Thank you, Dylan and Ariana. Both of you have done a wonderful job. I think we should give them another round of applause. Also supporting Ariana and Dylan tonight are their family members and their school family. Could they please stand and be recognized as well? The board appreciates the encouragement you have given these two young students, and again, we thank you for bringing them to tonight's meeting. So, thank you. We're going to move the agenda. I think we have, at this time, we typically have some board recognitions. Mr., Dr. Parker, would you please join me in front?
I have the honor of presenting this month's school board recognitions. The Virginia School Board Association's Business Honor Roll provides local school districts the opportunity to nominate and recognize up to three businesses for their support of public schools and our students. The Newport News School Board nominated three local partners for the 2019 Business Honor Roll to acknowledge and thank them for their support and service to the school district and the students that we serve. Last month, we acknowledged Newport News Shipbuilding and PepsiCo. This month, we're proud to recognize another distinguished partner named to the Business Honor Roll by the school board, Riverside Health System. Riverside is acknowledged in appreciation for its ongoing support of our public schools. Riverside's contributions are vital to the school division's mission of ensuring that all students graduate college, career, and citizen-ready. Present this evening to accept the recognition and the Business Honor Roll plaque on behalf of Riverside Health System and Riverside College of Health Careers is Michael Hamilton. Mr. Hamilton, would you please come forward? Mr. Hamilton is Director of Campus Resources for Riverside College of Health Careers. Riverside Health System and Riverside College of Health Careers are members of the Warwick High School Governors' Health Sciences Academy Advisory Committee, and they have representation on the Education Foundation and have devoted vital and expensive equipment and materials to the Health Sciences Academy. Through their support, the Warwick Governors' Health Sciences Academy has been able to grow substantially and still provide access to professional-grade health labs and experiences for all students. Riverside also operates a high school health sciences club, which brings students to the college and medical center to connect with health professionals and encourage them to pursue careers in health services. Students have the chance to interact with nurses, doctors, and medical technicians on a regular basis and learn what it takes to become a health professional. Mr. Hamilton, we thank you and your colleagues for your commitment to our students and our staff. Thank you very much. Thank you, and again, congratulations, and thank you for your unyielding support. Our final recognition this evening is an acknowledgement of service for Maria Jones, our student representative to the school board. Ms. Jones, would you please come down? In honor of your distinguished service to the school board and Newport News Public Schools, you're being presented with a resolution signed by the school board members and the superintendent. And if you'll indulge me for a minute, I'm going to read it. It reads, Newport News School Board, Resolution of Recognition Presented to Maria I. Jones. Whereas Newport News Public School Board approved in 2004 the creation of the position of student representative to the school board to increase board awareness of the views of students and to provide a peer with whom students could share ideas for improving education. And whereas Maria I. Jones, a senior at Woodside High School, was elected according to the approved procedures by the members of the Student Advisory Group on Education. And whereas Ms. Jones served in this capacity from July 2018 through June 2019 faithfully attending meetings of the school board and participating in numerous other school board functions. And whereas Ms. Jones was facilitator to the superintendent's high school student advisory group meetings and led the annual high school expo at Patrick Henry Mall. Whereas Ms. Jones actively sought student ideas on educational issues and pursued information and experiences that would assist her efforts to provide valuable insights during the discussion of school board meeting agenda items. And whereas Ms. Jones made meaningful contributions to board discussion on topics of great significance to students and the community. Whereas Ms. Jones diligently fulfilled all the responsibilities of the position of student representative, this is a long list, while also continuing to excel in her studies in advanced placement coursework, actively participating in the Woodside High School Chamber Orchestra, the Woodside High School Jubilee Corral, and the Virginia All-State Chorus, serving and volunteering with the Citywide Student Council Association Executive Board and the Newport News Mayor's Youth Commission, serving as a delegate representative for the City of Newport News at the National League of Cities Conference in Los Angeles, California, designing and assisting with the launch of the Bloom Middle School Girls' Empowerment Program, and representing Woodside High School at the 2018 Virginia Girls' State Program. That's actually a short list. Now therefore, be it resolved by the School Board of Newport News that Maria I. Jones is to be highly commended for exemplary service, dedication, and commitment during her tenure as the student representative to the school board, and it is signed by all members of the school board and the superintendent. Ms. Jones, we thank you for your service to the school board, and I'd also like to ask her family members to please stand. This is Maria's family joining her tonight to commemorate this occasion. Thank you, and congratulations as you, as you move on.
Thank you.
At this time, we're going to take about a six-minute break so that our honorees and our guests may leave if they choose to do so. During this time, our viewing audience will have an opportunity to view this month's school board spotlight, so we'll stand in recess for about six minutes. Thank you.
Let me just...
Traditionally, students are introduced to band instruments in middle school. In high school, students are able to join marching band for the first time. But third, fourth, and fifth grade students at Lee Hall Elementary are moving beyond current trends by forming the first-ever elementary school drum line in Newport News. This is Crimson Thunder, and they came to play. Lee Hall music teacher Tyrone Hodge formed Crimson Thunder this school year to give students an opportunity to excel musically and academically. Based on his observations in music class, Hodge selected fifteen third through fifth grade students to join Crimson Thunder's inaugural season. One of the goals is for these students to read music on a middle-school level, but their growing understanding of cadence, tempo, and rhythm has made their performances nothing short of amazing. Multiple morning and afternoon practices have quickly sharpened these young musicians' talents. At its heart, Crimson Thunder is all about mentoring and academic growth. The students spend time during each practice working on homework or reading. They are also mentored by the talented drum line from Demby High School's Marching Patriots. The more seasoned student musicians are able to share dance moves and stick tricks with Crimson Thunder, while the mentoring adds a level of responsibility for the high school students to stay on top of their game. Tyrone Hodge firmly believes in the power of music to inspire these students to greatness, so much so that fifty percent of the money used to purchase the musical instruments was out of his pocket, while generous donations from family and friends funded the rest. In just five months, these students have become a legit performing drum line, astonishing crowds wherever they march.
I want to change the world by stopping bullying because it's really bad to bully people, and I don't like when people get bullied.
I want to change the world by planting trees and flowers because I don't want people to get sick.
How I would change the world is by everybody being friends and no bullying.
I want to change the world by giving back to my community and my friends.
I want to change the world by being kind, so other people can follow me by being kind
The way I want to change the world is giving all the homeless people some money so they can have a place to live and they can have food.
To change the world, I want to provide people with clean water and food to everyone.
I want to change the world by telling people to stop littering, that if you find trash, just clean it up.
I want to change the world to make people stop smoking and drinking because it's not healthy for you.
What I would do to change the world, I would make the world a better place, be friends, and not fight over little things, and love each other, and live happily ever after.
Through Warwick High School's Governors' Health Sciences Academy, students receive unique learning experiences to prepare them for future careers in a variety of medical fields. But some lessons aren't for the faint of heart. Please be aware, certain footage may be difficult to watch. Viewer discretion is advised. Dr. Marjorie Guisal Wallace gave students in two of her project Lead the Way courses a truly transformative learning experience. During Principles of Biomedical Science and Human Body Systems, freshmen and sophomore students were able to work with actual hearts to practice making incisions, suturing, and labeling the external and internal parts of the muscular organ. The hearts came from pigs, donated by Smithfield Foods, Incorporated. Pig hearts are a perfect substitute since their structure, size, and function are similar to a human heart. During multiple class periods, the health sciences students explored the heart from the point of view of different medical professionals. They weighed and measured the heart the way a pathologist or forensic technician would. They identified the external anatomy and blood flow, just like a cardiologist. And similar to a cardiac surgeon, the students scrubbed in, prepped their sterile workspace, and made cuts and sutures as if conducting a heart transplant. The students worked in teams to hand each other the correct surgical instruments and take detailed notes during the autopsy. To touch a once-living organ and learn to show respect to the organ donor was an important step for these Warwick students, who also discussed moral, legal, and ethical issues. Exploring an actual heart was a practical, hands-on, minds-on lesson that will benefit these students as they move closer to their medical careers.
Welcome back. At this time, before we continue with our meeting, we were in a closed session, and we just finished up that closed session, so by rule, we must come out of that closed session. So I need a motion in order for us to come out of our closed session.
Mr. Chairman, I do have a motion. Where is the school board of the City of Newport News has convened a closed meeting on this date pursuant to an affirmative recorded vote in accordance with the provisions of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act? Whereas Section 2.2-3712D of the Code of Virginia requires a certification by this school board that such a closed meeting was conducted in conformity with Virginia law, now therefore be it resolved that the Newport News School Board hereby certifies that to the best of each member's knowledge, one, only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements by Virginia law were discussed in the closed meeting to which this certification applies, and two, only such public business matters as were identified in the motion conveying the closed meeting were heard, discussed, or considered.
So you heard the motion. Is there a second?
Second.
You heard the motion, and you heard a second. Time for the question. There being none, Ms. Buffalo, could you please call the roll?
Ms. Searls Law?
Four.
Dr. Best?
Four.
Mr. Brown?
Four.
Mr. Harris?
Four.
Mr. Hunter?
Four.
Ms. Simons?
Four.
Motion carries six zero.
Okay. Thank you very much. So, at this time, I'd like to welcome you back and hope you enjoy the school board spotlight. At this time, during our meeting, we provide time for the public to address the board. We consider this time the opportunity to listen to your comments. Please understand that we consider your concerns, and we'll get back with you at a later time. Please comply with our three-minute time limit. As you begin, a green light will come on. A yellow light signals that you have thirty seconds remaining. A red light in the beep indicates your time is up, so we'll ask that you would bring your comments to a close. And so we do have some cards, so as you hear your name, please come forward. Terry Curl is first.
Hello.
Hello?
We, the parents and grandparents and concerned citizens of school-aged children in the City of Newport News, would first like to say thank you. Thank you to the Newport News School Board for standing up and confirming to our children, parents, and more importantly, our teachers and administration that there will be accountability in our schools. That the most important thing that shall come through the doors of our schools has and always will be the students and what is best for their success, and that every decision made by the school board and all administration will be based solely on those grounds. We, as parents, realize that sometimes we may not like the decisions that are made and may not even understand them or agree with them, but we rest in the assurance that they are being made with the best interest of not only our children but for all parties involved. This has been a tough year for many of the students and faculty at Woodside High School, and we would like to say thank you. Thank you, faculty, for hearing our concerns. Thank you to the school board for looking into our concerns and taking needed actions to address them. Although we recognize that this was a very hard decision and that a very talented and loved band director by many had to be moved in order for it to take place, we realize that it was the only alternative to a no-win situation. Moving forward, we, as parents, grandparents, and concerned citizens of school-aged children Moving forward, we, as parents, grandparents, and concerned citizens of Newport News are looking into the process of getting some laws on the books governing parent booster organizations. Giving schools and school boards more control and input into running of parent booster organizations and teacher involvement. And to assure that a situation such as what has occurred over many years at Woodside High School never occurs again in the state of Virginia. It is our desire to work closely with the school board during a process to incorporate the ideas, suggestions, and expectations of all parties involved are met and followed. And that there will be accountability for all parties involved in the future. We believe that in doing this, it will alleviate the majority of the confusion, hurt feelings, and stress placed upon our children, parents, and staff moving forward and allow for a better program for the future. Parent booster organizations are a very valuable asset to the school programs and with the proper laws in place. We will provide an across-the-board expectation and clear understanding of the do's and don'ts suspected of everyone involved. And allow the school and if needed, school board to step in when those expectations are not being met. In order to prevent the interruption of our students' education and situations from occurring that have occurred this year. We encourage you, the school board, to please help us in getting these laws in place as this has been an unfortunate situation that we pray will never be allowed to occur in our schools again. In light of all that has transpired and the changes that have been taking place. Are there any plans or suggestions for the Woodside Band Booster Organization until these laws can be changed to ensure that nothing of this magnitude occurs in the future? And in closing, again, we would like to say thank you for all your hard work in ensuring the success of our kids. And in the words of someone highly appreciated and respected, thank you for allowing us to send you our very best.
Thank you. Next, we have Ms. Darlene Walker.
All righty. Hello, everyone.
Hello.
I am Darlene Walker and I'm here representing the National Black Child Development Institute and our BCDI Hampton Roads affiliate. We bring you greetings. We are working strong in our area. We're really working toward just boosting literacy within our family, our children. And we recently had an event at the Hampton, excuse me, at Newport News' Barnes &amp; Noble. And it's an annual book fair. This was our fifth year. And so he doesn't know it, but we're here to give Mr. Marvin Harris his recognition for supporting us. He stepped in the gap. And so we just thought we would surprise him and just have him come forward, if you may, and to give you that recognition. All righty. And as he he stepped in to fill in the gap for Dr. Best. And we so appreciated him coming out and we just thanked him. He was just having a good time with us. And we've actually given out here in our area about 2,500 books to our children to promote that home literacy piece. And about 2,000 of those books have gone to Newport News schools and mainly Head Start programs on this side as well as the South Side. But also John Marshall Early Childhood Center. And they are our adopted schools, so we work closely with them. And so we just thank you guys and we have a little something for you. We thank you all and we will continue to work to lift up families in our community.
Next, we have Mr. Roderick Barnes. Capo Man.
Hello, good. Hi there, everybody. Good evening. I am here on behalf of the Planning Committee of the Hampton Roads Peninsula Youth Leadership Conference. We are having our third annual leadership conference on September 28th, 2019. Like I said, this is our third annual. We had the first two in Newport News at Kingdom Church in South Morris last year. This year, we're going to be in Hampton because it does say Peninsula. So we're going to be at YH Thomas Community Center. The goal of, in line, well, the goal of our conference in line with the beautiful job that we're doing in Newport News with youth development. This year, we're going to focus on exposing the youth to as many opportunities in the community for youth organizations and development. I really, I'm coming from Norfolk. This is my third year in Newport News. I'm a teacher in Newport News. I really appreciate the youth development that you have over here and the involvement and the graduation, on-time graduation happening with that involvement. It is a percentage that is not active or participate and this is where the community can partner. I'll go, our motto, unity, love, and collaboration. So this is the first of my tour. I'm going to City Council next and we're actually, the Hampton School Board meeting tomorrow. And then we go hit the City Council so we can officially let the cities and the school know what we're doing. Open for collaboration. We do have a Facebook page that you can register you and also register if you want to get involved. We're open for ideas. This is a community effort. Thank you. And I'm going to pass on a flyer and I'll send you all some electronic flyers in the email.
Thank you, Mr. Barnes. I may have missed, yeah, thank you, Mr. Barnes. Next, Ms. Jamie Basemore. Janey, how are you doing, Ms. Basemore?
Good. I'm fine. How are you? Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the school board, and Mr. Superintendent. The newspapers reported that I said that I was glad about the outcome of the City Council work session last Tuesday. He didn't put the pre-words and the aft-words there that I, that what I said was that, excuse me. What I said was that I was glad to hear the words Huntington and CIP mentioned at the same time. I was glad to see some progress from the city. What I was not glad about in that work session was when the city manager said that the $2.8 million for the design and planning of Huntington Middle School was put back into the city coffers. No, we're not happy about that. And we're not going to let that deter us. We want to thank you, board members, for the efforts that you put forth for Huntington Middle School. For fighting along beside us. We want to thank you for recognizing the importance and the necessity of Huntington Middle School. We are not done yet. We have a long way to go. They put the Huntington into the FY21 CIP budget. We give praise for that much, but we will continue to fight for earlier program for the middle school students zoned to Huntington. And for those who will be, who will come to Huntington from all over the city for the magnet programs. Our fight is for every child in the city to receive equal and quality educations. This fight is not about me. It's not about any of my children because I don't have any children in the school system. She left in 1999. I continue to volunteer and I will continue to volunteer. We must all share in making our school system the best that it can be. We must all ensure that every child in the city receives equal and ensure that every child is, is involved equally in our education system. We must also ensure that Huntington will rise again. And so we continue to ask for your support. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next, we have Ms. Renee Lovett.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
I just wanted to come up and tell you all thank you. Thank you so much. This board has been very, very supportive of Huntington. And we couldn't have picked as a city, we couldn't have picked a better team to fight for us, fight for the city, fight for the teachers, for everybody. And I wanted to tell you thank you. But I know our fight isn't over yet, so please hang in there and keep fighting for us. And we'll be there for you, whatever you need, whatever we need. We're a team. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Are there any more cards? Are there any more cards? Are there any more cards? There being none, we will move the agenda. Before we get started on our consent agenda, at our last meeting, there were two board members that were not present. Both had excused absences, but in one case, we had, Ms. Simons was actually representing the school board at the New Horizons graduation. And so we want to make sure we note that, that she was doing school board business, official school board business with her excused absence. And that being said, Ms. Simons, do you have anything to tell us about that graduation?
Oh, I, I just really enjoyed representing Newport News, Public Schools, and the board at the graduation. We had over 900 students graduate and with certifications in areas like firefighting and plumbing. And we also had mechatronics where they can go right into careers in advanced manufacturing. So New Horizons is a really neat two-year program. I just recommend it to anybody in high school who's thinking about going directly into a career. Thanks for giving me the opportunity.
Well, thank you, Ms. Simons. I know it's a wonderful thing. I think some of us spoke on that in our comments last week about the great things that are happening in Newport News Public Schools and the surrounding schools. So thank you for that, that insight. We'll move the agenda now to item number three, our consent agenda. 3.01, we have minutes from our work session, 5/21/2019. 3.02, our special meeting on 5/21/2019. 3.03, our minutes from our regular meeting, 5/21/2019. 3.04, our financial reports, revenue reports, expense reports, child nutrition reports, all from May 2019. We also have 3.05, personnel report. 3.06, the C. Waldorf Scott Center lease. And 3.07, authorization of signature in absence of the division superintendent. If I could get a motion for approval of the consent agenda.
So moved. Second.
You heard the motion and you heard the second. Time for the question. There being none, Ms. Buffalo, could you please call the roll?
Dr. Best?
Four.
Mr. Brown?
Four.
Mr. Harris?
Four.
Mr. Hunter?
Four.
Ms. Simons?
Four.
Motion carries six zero.
Thank you very much. We'll move the agenda to our action items, number four. Oops. I'm sorry. I, I'm sorry. We did have some personnel approvals and appointments. And so I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Parker, item number 3.05 Personnel Report. Dr. Parker.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. It is an honor and a pleasure to introduce two appointments tonight. I would first like to introduce Dr. Micah Smith, the new principal of Dozier Middle School. Dr. Smith is currently serving as the data specialist on our Teaching and Learning Department. Dr. Smith has an extensive background which includes a variety of experiences as a school and central, at the school and central office level. An educator with over 28 years of experience, Micah has served as a classroom teacher, lead teacher, data analyst, IB coordinator, assistant principal for instruction, and data specialist. Most notably, Dr. Smith was selected in 2007 to develop and implement the International Baccalaureate Program at Kings Fork High School in Suffolk. In 2018, she completed her Doctorate of Education in Education Policy, Planning, and Leadership at the College of William &amp; Murray. Congratulations on your appointment. We look forward to great things. And at this time, we'd like you to introduce any family members who are present with you this evening. Well, welcome and congratulations. Our second appointment this evening, I'd like to introduce Mia Stevens, the new program administrator at Heritage High School. Ms. Stevens is currently serving as the Special Programs Lead Teacher and Business and Information Technology Teacher at Heritage High School. Where she has spent all 21 years of her career in education. In addition to classroom experiences, Mia has prepared herself for this opportunity by taking on numerous responsibilities such as magnet recruitment, event planning, and coordinating career-related opportunities for magnet program students. She has also been instrumental in coordinating the Stimulating Minds and Cyber Security Camps. Congratulations. And at this time, we'd like you to introduce any family members or friends who are here to support you this evening. Heritage Family, stand, stand to be recognized. There you go. All right. And congratulations. We look forward to great things in your, your new appointed role. And that concludes the appointments for this evening, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Dr. Parker. So I guess we'll move the items down to our action items. Item 4.01, federal funding applications. Can we get a, we heard the report last week. Can we get a motion?
So moved.
A second.
You heard the motion and you heard the second. Time for the question. There being none, Ms. Buffalo, please call the roll.
Mrs. Searls Law?
Four.
Dr. Best?
Four.
Mr. Brown?
Four.
Mr. Harris?
Four.
Mr. Hunter?
Four.
Ms. Simons?
Four.
Motion carries six zero.
Thank you. And then our next item of action, 4.02, is our handbook revisions. Again, we heard a report last week. Can we get a motion for that approval?
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the Rights and Responsibility Handbook revisions as presented on, on the last board meeting.
You heard the second. Is there a second?
Second.
You heard the motion and the second. Time for the question. There being none, Ms. Buffalo, please call the roll.
Mrs. Searls Law?
Four.
Dr. Best?
Four.
Mr. Brown?
Four.
Mr. Harris?
Four.
Mr. Hunter?
Four.
Ms. Simons?
Four.
Motion carries six zero.
Thank you. And then our last action item, 4.03, advancing the school division's strategic goal for financial resiliency.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. At the last board meeting, the board was inclined to entertain the, the recommendation to develop a proclamation which could reflect the board's commitment to, to our financial goals of funding, fully funding our school division initiatives, both operational and capital in the future. We have diligently put together a resolution for the board to consider this evening. And if you would be so inclined, you're welcome to have a board member read it or I can do that myself. Okay. So let me find it here in my booklet here. I'm looking here. There we go. All right. So I will read the resolution and, Mr. Chairman, if the board is so inclined to adopt this, this resolution. We will forward this resolution, assigned resolution, to the city with our committed, committed endorsement of this resolution. The resolution is titled, "The Resolution of the Newport News School Board Expressing Goals and Objectives to Be Studied and Addressed to Advance the School Division's Strategic Goal of Financial Resiliency." Whereas the Newport News School Board is illegally constituted, is a legally constituted local governing body which powers and duties expressed in the Code of Virginia. And whereas Virginia school boards are vested with the powers to operate, maintain, and supervise public schools within their jurisdiction. And whereas two primary responsibilities of the school board are the development and approval of an operating budget for each fiscal year which addresses the mission essential needs of the school division and the development and submission of a capital improvement program to the city which reflects any capital projects and improvements which are necessary. And And whereas, the school board is committed to establishing both operational and capital budget goals in collaboration with staff and community stakeholders that provide a public roadmap for ensuring that fiscal planning and budgetary practices remain focused on the needs of students. And whereas, the school board wishes to establish and promulgate relevant goals and objectives addressing operating budget and capital improvement issues. Now therefore be it resolved by the Newport News School Board, that we are, one, that we are committed to the following goals relevant to the school division's operating budget and capital improvement program. The first goal, the goal for the operating budget is to establish reliable and consistent funding to support a properly funded, quality school division. We will accomplish this goal by developing, development of a revenue sharing agreement between the Newport News City Council and School Board, which memorializes an agreement for the allocation of city revenues for school division operating budget purposes. Two, establishing an agreement for support of compensation increases for the next biennium in the state budget FY twenty-one and twenty-two. The second goal, the goal for the capital improvement program is to establish a reliable and consistent funding mechanism to support well-constructed and maintained schools and other school division buildings and facilities. We will accomplish this goal by development of a long-range plan involving the City Council and School Board to address funding of school division capital needs. And requiring the long-range plan, a long-range plan to include appropriate consideration and funding of both capital maintenance needs and capital project funding. The school board hereby directs or instructs the superintendent to make such studies and inquiries, as will properly guide the accomplishment of the goals and objectives. This includes working with the Newport News City Manager as is necessary and appropriate. The school board and its members agree to make themselves available to work with the City Council to cause the goals to be realized. And that concludes the resolution, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Dr. Parker. You heard the resolution read by Dr. Parker. Can we get a motion for approval?
Mr. Chairman, I do move to approve the resolution as presented at this time.
Second.
You heard the motion and you heard the second. Time for the question. There being none, Ms. Buffalo, would you please call a roll?
Mrs. Searls Law?
Four.
Dr. Best?
Four.
Mr. Brown?
Four.
Mr. Harris?
Four.
Mr. Hunter?
Four.
Ms. Simons?
Four.
Motion carries six zero.
Thank you very much. I hope that this resolution, again, will help us as we continue our communications with our City Council, and for our capital needs to include Huntington, new middle school, STEM Academy, STEAM Academy, vocational, or whatever we have, but Huntington facilities there, as well as maintaining the buildings that we currently have here today. That resolution also kind of addresses, again, our operating budget to make sure that we have qualified teachers, administrative staffs, bus drivers, cafeteria workers, and that we'll be able to give them necessary raises each year when, in times of, in good times here, when the country is having today. So, again, this is the board. Again, I thank my board and this school board and Dr. Parker and his team for trying to move the school system forward. Again, thank you to the school board members and Mr. Harris. I think you mentioned last time by doing a resolution, and this is what we're doing. So, we're taking leads from you as well. So, thank you, Mr. Harris, for bringing that forth, and thank the school board members for, again, approving that. So, we'll forward it on to the City Council for their review. Okay. Item number five, reports and information. I guess we'll have Ms. Tracy Brooks is up with the new and revised policies.
Great, thank you.
And procedures.
Yes, indeed. Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Vice Chairman, members of the board, and Dr. Parker. It's a pleasure to be here this evening to share with you highlights from fifteen new and revised policies and procedures. As you know, one of the major roles of the school board is to set the policy direction for the school division. So, we're very fortunate to have two board members on our policy committee, Mrs. Searls Law and Mr. Yilly. We also have a principal from each level. We have an academic services administrator, a teacher representative, two attorneys, and then myself as a policy administrator. During the policy review process, and we have a figure of how the process proceeds, our department heads and our senior staff members present their new and revised policy recommendations to the committee. So, after we review and discuss their recommendations, we hold a public comment period, and then we incorporate any input from those comments into the drafts that are before you this evening. And that is step eight of our policy review process. So, this evening, as I said, I have fifteen new and revised policies and procedures, so I've put them into three groups. The first group are those that are required by recent General Assembly legislation this past spring, and they will become effective July first. The second group that I'll be sharing with you this evening are policies and procedures we are recommending to be in alignment with the Virginia School Boards Association Policy Manual. And then, the third group are policies and procedures to reflect our current practices that we have in place right here in the school division. So, for this first group, there are three revised policies and procedures that are resulting from General Assembly legislation. And they address the prohibition of tobacco and nicotine vapor products in our schools. The second are additional provisions to our conflicts of interest procedures. And third are changes to our start-of-school policy, as well as inclement weather days. So, for the first, we are expanding our current school board policy on tobacco-free schools to include a new state prohibition on the use and distribution of nicotine vapor products on school buses, on school division, other school division vehicles, on school board property, and for any school-sponsored events, both on and off sites. Now, the sanctions for students using or distributing these products were included in the R, the Student Rights and Responsibilities Handbook that you approved earlier this evening. Now, the state also requires school divisions to provide referral services to students and staff for overcoming tobacco addiction. So, we will be doing this through our employee assistance program for staff and for students through a program that will be implemented by our student support specialists in our high schools. Next, we are revising our current conflicts of interest procedure to include two new state code provisions. The first allows the school board to hire, allows the school board to hire a member of the superintendent's family if the superintendent certifies that he or she did not have any involvement in the hiring process, and the human resources director must certify that the hiring recommendation was based on merit. The second provision requires every elected school board member to complete Conflict of Interest Act training conducted by the State Ethics Council once every two years. So, for board members in office on July first, the initial training must be completed by December thirty-first of this year. After that, new school board members will have two months, within two months of taking office, to complete that training. Last in the group of General Assembly actions is our policy on the school day and school year. Our current policy prohibits schools from opening prior to Labor Day, and this has been in place for decades in Virginia. Now, state law allows the school board to approve a calendar to allow students to attend school up to fourteen days prior to Labor Day. However, if the first day of school is before Labor Day, the state code requires that the Friday immediately preceding the Labor Day holiday, through the holiday itself, that schools will be closed for that period. The second change to this policy allows schools to waive the current requirement to provide additional teaching days and instructional hours when the governor issues a mandatory evacuation, and that waiver can be for up to five days. So, as you recall, this past fall, we had such an evacuation order, but we did have to make up those days at that time, which we did this current school year. And now, the second group of policies. I'll be speaking with you very briefly about eight new and revised policies and procedures that we're recommending to be in line with the Virginia School Board's Policy Association Manual. And this is the second group that I mentioned earlier. So, there are eight, and I'll go through these very briefly. The first three policies and procedures were adding clarifying language to be consistent with state and federal guidelines, and to also reflect some of our current practices. So, for example, in our procedure on service animals, we're adding language to reflect the accommodation that we will accommodate students and staff who are allergic to certain animals in terms of how they are arranged in the building, in the room, or in the facility. And our policy on school board work sessions and retreats, we're adding the staff requirement that the minutes for work sessions and retreats be voted on at a regular board meeting, which this school board currently does. And lastly, in our teacher planning policy, we're incorporating the daily planning times for teachers under the state code, which is an average of thirty minutes per day during the week for elementary classroom teachers, and one planning period per day for middle and high school classroom teachers, which we actually exceed during much of the school year. Now, although these next three policies are new and align us with the VSBAs Policy Manual, we've actually implemented them consistently over the past years. So, under our school division goals and objectives policies, we state that we will implement the SOQs, our Standards of Quality. And as you know, these cover areas such as classroom instruction, our policies, staffing ratios, and public engagement. Second, we will develop and implement a strategic plan, which we do, and we will report to the public on the implementation of that plan every two years. And third is a new policy that requires the school division to audit our school activity fund accounts annually by a qualified accounting firm. And this is also a practice that we have always had in place. And our last two policies in this group state that school board members will receive an annual salary according to state law for performing your official duties. And we also have a policy that school board members will be provided liability insurance while performing your official duties for the school division. And this is also consistent with current school board practice. Now, our last four policies and procedures this evening are being revised to reflect current school division practices, and also to align them with state and federal laws. Now, the changes that we are recommending to the admission of transfer students policy really works to clarify the treatment of weighted credit for students who are transferring into the school division, and to level the playing field for our current students. So, as you know, weighted credit are points that are added to advanced courses, such as our honors courses, our advanced placement courses, and our international baccalaureate classes, which are used in calculating a student's GPA, as well as their class rank. So, we're adding clarifying language to our policy that weighted credit will be awarded only to those transfer courses that are also weighted in Newport News schools. Now, if a transfer student completed a weighted course in another school division prior to the school year that the course was first offered in Newport News, then the transfer student will not receive credit for the course, which is consistent with our surrounding school divisions here on the peninsula. Next is the instructional material allowance procedure, which is new, but it also reflects our current practice around the allowance that the school board provides annually to our teachers. So, currently, the allowance is fifty dollars for elementary and middle school teachers and twenty-five dollars for high school teachers. So, this procedure includes the new internal revenue services requirements, that teachers submit their receipts for reimbursement within sixty days of purchasing their materials. After that, any receipts received after that will be sent to our payroll office, and it will be paid as taxable income to the employees. So, that's a new IRS provision that we will be communicating to our teachers. The changes to our expense authorization and reimbursement for travel procedures address the increasing number of options, particularly for air transportation, for our employees who are traveling for professional development opportunities, such as workshops, seminars, and conferences. So, according to this procedure, for example, airline fees for early boarding and extra legroom are allowed, for example, but fees for overweight baggage are not. So, those are just two examples. And my last policy this evening, the physical examinations of students policy and our student admissions to school procedure really work with, and according to the state code, students will be required to get a physical exam prior to being admitted for the first time to school. So, we are removing the provision that allowed a thirty-day grace period for a student to get a physical exam after being admitted. So, that's a state code requirement. So, in terms of next steps, our new and revised policies will come before you at your July first board meeting for approval. And once approved, we will post the new and revised policies and procedures on our school division website, and we'll disseminate that information to our schools and to our public libraries. So, this concludes my report this evening. I'll be happy to answer your questions.
Any question? Yes, Ms. Jones?
Amazing report. I just have one question about the program you'd be making available to students overcoming the nicotine or tobacco addictions.
Yes.
Now, you mentioned that it'd be, you're working with the student support specialists, but maybe also working with the counselors, because I know a lot of students don't realize they have a student support specialist or who that person is in their building. So, maybe having the counselors work with the support specialist would make it more accessible to the students.
Great, that's a great suggestion. Thank you so much.
Any more questions? There being none. Ms. Brooks, thanks for the report.
Oh, great, thank you.
Okay. Our next item, five point oh two, our graduation wrap-up. Dr. Barnett will give us a report.
Good evening, Chairman Gary Hunter, Vice Chair Douglas Brown, members of the school board, and Superintendent George Parker. This evening, I am excited to share with you the outstanding accomplishments of the Newport News Public Schools Class of two thousand and nineteen. This presentation will highlight our scholarship totals, percentages of students completing advanced coursework, our various magnet programs, student club and activity participation, as well as our graduating seniors' plans for the future. Our mission in Newport News Public Schools is to graduate students college, career, and citizen-ready. We're pleased to share that this year, we graduated one thousand seven hundred and thirty-nine students, and forty-six percent of our graduating seniors graduated with honors, earning a three-point-oh GPA or higher. Twenty percent of the class of two thousand and nineteen graduated with highest honors, earning a three-point-five GPA, and over fifty-six million dollars in scholarships were offered to our high school seniors. If you take a look at our scholarship totals, you will see that this year's scholarship total is four-point-a-million-dollar increase from last year. We want to offer special congratulations to both Heritage High School and Minchville High School for their significant increases in scholarship money offered to their seniors. A part of Newport News Public Schools' academic agenda is providing the structures, resources, and experiences necessary to ensure that all students graduate college-ready. In addition to earning scholarships to attend college, forty-nine percent of our seniors earned advanced studies diplomas, and eighty percent completed honors, advanced placement, dual enrollment, or international baccalaureate coursework. Over three thousand seven hundred advanced placement courses were completed by the class of two thousand and nineteen, and eighty-seven students earned early college or early career distinctions, in addition to one thousand five hundred and eighty-four college credit hours. Wanted to give you just a little bit of background around what it takes to earn an advanced studies diploma. In order to graduate with an advanced studies diploma, a student must earn at least twenty-six standard units of credit by passing the required courses and electives, and earn non-verified credits by passing end-of-course Standards of Learning Assessments. Providing opportunities, resources, and training for students to become career-ready is another commitment that we've made here in Newport News Public Schools. In keeping with this commitment, we are proud to announce that two thousand six hundred and ten industry certifications were earned, and over three hundred and sixty-one students and ten industry certifications were earned, and over three hundred and sixty-one students successfully completed magnet requirements in aviation, health sciences, STEM, and the In addition to academic achievements, Newport News Public Schools prides itself on youth development, and therefore, we are dedicated to ensuring that our students also graduate citizen-ready. The class of two thousand nineteen continues its legacy, as eighty-three percent of seniors participated in clubs, sports, and activities, and many of their organizations included a community service component, providing seventy-eight percent of our seniors an opportunity to perform volunteer work in their community. Finally, our work is not done once our students receive their diplomas. We work diligently to ensure that each student has a post-graduation plan. The class of two thousand nineteen reports that eight percent will enter the military, twenty-five percent plan to enter the workforce in technical studies, and sixty-seven percent will attend a two- or four-year college or university. I'd like to just take this opportunity to thank the board for your continuous support of our students, our families, and our staff at our schools, and especially acknowledge the time, energy, and encouragement you provided during our graduation ceremonies. This concludes my presentation. I'm available to answer any questions at this time.
Any questions? Ms. Simons?
Thank you so much. It's really important to celebrate the success of our seniors, and, you know, school is hard nowadays. It's not easy. It takes a lot of determination and grit to get through it, and I just want to remind the public out there that our students have passed S O L exams to graduate. So, every now and then, you hear people out there saying, "I'm not sure what that diploma means," but we have a system out there where it means something because these students have taken tests to verify the knowledge and what they've learned. So, the diploma that you get from any high school in the state of Virginia means something because it's backed up by a standards of learning test. So, I just want to make sure everybody out and the public understands that these diplomas really are backed by a test.
Thank you so much for sharing that. You're absolutely right.
Mr. Brown?
Yes. Fantastic presentation, and congratulations to the class of two thousand nineteen, really an outstanding class, and it was an honor and a pleasure to be in their presence last weekend and see them come across the stage. One question I have, because I'm always comparing us to the nation, is if we can get the information on within the nation, percentage of high school students who are going to the military, going into the workforce, going into two-year technical degrees and/or going on to college, so we can compare our percentage of students who are choosing to do the paths that we've laid out here in comparison to the rest of the nation, just to see how we, if we are abnormally great, which I'm assuming that we probably are, or if we have some areas that we can continue to target.
Absolutely.
Any other questions? Dr. Barnett, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. Five point oh three, C N U captains program.
Good evening, school board chair, Mr. Hunter, vice chair, Mr. Brown, Dr. Parker, and members of the board. I'd like to thank you for the opportunity to share information with you this evening on the partnership between Christopher Newport University and Newport News Public Schools, known as the Community Captains Program. This program positions tenth-grade students to early college exposure, ensuring that they are college, career, and citizenship-ready. The Community Captains Program is a non-binding commitment to attend Christopher Newport with the final goal of preparing students for post-secondary success. This evening, I will share with you the criteria and demographics of the participants, program benefits, timeline activities, and next steps. Please allow me to share a brief video clip on a community captain's first visit to the campus.
...that we can position and prepare you to go off to college and be gloriously successful. But we hope, over the next two years, that by spending time on this campus, you will fall in love with Christopher Newport, as each of us have.
The partnership between Newport News Public Schools and Christopher Newport University is an exciting opportunity. You are a part of the first class of our community captains. You are trailblazers. So, today, I'm challenging you to make the most of this college experience. Get to know the campus, get to know the students, the learning environment, and the programs here. Take advantage of all that C N U has to offer. Being the community captain will ensure that you're prepared for success, no matter where your final destination may be in a few years. We're going to equip you and give you access to opportunities to make better decisions regarding your future.
The thing that they started with the morning program, a campus tour, and lunch in the dining hall. It was priceless watching the excitement and energy of our students. Picture on this slide are the seventy-seven students who attended the tour. Participants of the program met the following requirements. Tenth graders with a minimum grade point average of three-point-four or minimum P S A T score of eleven-fifty. In addition, students had to meet the criteria of one of the above and be considered a first-generation college student or qualify for free or reduced lunch. The first politic group consisted of tenth graders from an achievable dream, Heritage, and Ward High School. The first group of students included fifty-two females and thirty-one males, with a total of eighty-three students. Of the eighty-three students, seventy-five percent are first-generation college students. Next year, the other three high schools will come on board with all six schools participating. This slides provides a breakdown of the number of students based on ethnicity, showing the various cultural representation of the participants. When viewing program benefits during the sophomore year, all students received a provisional acceptance letter and a campus visit. During the junior year, students will be assigned a C N U student mentor, attend on-campus workshops, and will be invited to attend athletic and cultural events. During the senior year, students will have an opportunity to take a college credit course on campus. They will be offered early admissions to C N U and receive a free four-year meal plan. During the month of March, we focused on getting information out to families and held student assemblies. In April, we held student interviews and a visit to the campus. It was important to us to keep our families included in the process, and evening parent meetings were held in March, and in April, the parent visit and tour of the campus was Picture before you is eighty-eight family members who attended that tour. The community captain's timeline will start in September with dinner on campus with mentors and students attending a C N U football game. In October, workshops will be offered to include a panel discussion with C N U professors. During the month of November, families will attend on-campus activities, and additional workshops and activities have been recommended for the spring semester. In reviewing next steps for our juniors, we will schedule and conduct focus group meetings, outline mentoring meeting dates, and continue to work on the activity timeline. For our sophomores, we will work with all six high schools and introduce the program to students during grade-level meetings. We will identify our participants and prepare an activity timeline. In closing, I would like to thank Dr. Parker and President Treble for their vision and in moving forward with this opportunity for our students. Additionally, I would like to thank the teams at the high schools, many of them are here The central office staff and Christopher Newport University for their dedication and commitment, and tonight, we have the representative for C N U here with us, Mr. Davidson. To the board, I thank you for the opportunity to share highlights with you this evening and welcome the opportunity to come back before you and share updates. At this time, I would be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions? Mr. Brown?
Well, you know, as always, a data question, so if we can baseline now the number of students who are matriculating into C N U, and then, when we come back next year, do a comparison of what the increase is, and then, and also, particularly, look at our increase from looking at various groups of learners and what our increases are. So, I'm looking forward to that and seeing the increases come in years to come.
Is there, Dr. Hines, is there a limit on the number of people or students that they can accept?
Yes, we were given a number of seventy-five to eighty. Just went a little over with the eighty-three, but that was our range, seventy-five to eighty.
And so, next year, that's going to be the same? Since we're going to include, so it's going to be tougher?
It is going to be tough.
It's going to be tougher to get in when you add three more schools, yeah.
I think this course may be similar to Douglas's, but is there any way possible to capture the students that came from Newport News Public School System that is at C N U now?
Yes, we can get that information out to you. We actually do have that information.
Actually, they have the data. They've tracked, before we started this program, they tracked the students who were Newport News graduates and how they were performing, and that's how they determined the G P A requirement for this program. What they've determined was that Newport News Public School students who are attending Christopher Newport, who had a three-point-four or higher in high school, are doing perfect, doing well at Christopher Newport. So, they do have data reflecting the number of students, demographics, and their academic performance. I was very impressed with how they had prepared for that conversation.
Ms. Simons?
I just want to thank C N U so much for this great opportunity for our students, and I actually was presented the concept of this program early on and said that I really felt the meal plan was important, so I was just so excited to see that the meal plan is in there for the students. I just think that that's great because, for sure, you know, a lot of students could save money by living at home, but having that meal plan and being able to eat on campus for convenience and camaraderie, I just, I think it's amazing. So, thank you so much to C N U for providing the meals to the students.
Ms. Jones?
Awesome presentation. It sounds like a really exciting program. I just have one question. I'm noticing just a little bit of disproportionality in the students accepted, as well as far as from what schools they came from. So, when moving forward, and especially since we're going to be opening this up to the all-six high schools, is there any way we could perhaps have a little bit more proportionality in making maybe the numbers even in who's accepted from, in the number of students you accept from each high school, just so that we're really making sure that the opportunity is equally available to everybody versus more, it seeming like it's more available to students from one school than another?
We can definitely take a look at that. Good point.
Okay. If there's any more questions, thank you for a wonderful report. Okay. We're going to move the agenda now on a little faster. Five point oh four, the attendance report, five point oh five, membership report, five point oh six, the construction reports, were all part of your package. Is there any questions on those? There being none, we'll move to five point oh seven, comments by our superintendent, Dr. Parker.
And thank you, Mr. Chairman. I would, I thank Dr. Barnett again for the report earlier this evening on the class of two thousand nineteen. I'm also proud of our recent graduates and with them, I wish them much success in the future. Maria, you've truly represented the student body of Newport News extremely well as our I can tell you that there's been many evenings we've sat here and said, "Wow." You know, we can't believe what she's saying, but you have definitely done your homework, and you will definitely be a great community servant in the future, so thank you so much for that, and we wish you the best. Is it still North Carolina A and T?
A really amazing opportunity popped up for me in D.C., so actually, this weekend, I switched to, I'll be attending Howard University.
I know those were two. She's been living back and forth, so congratulations, and kudos to Howard, because you're a great find for them. The school board members and I participated in all of the graduation ceremonies held last weekend. It was truly a proud occasion for our graduates, their families, and friends, and our staff as well. Great job to all of the staff who assisted with the logistics of those graduations. It is a big operation, and I could tell you Newport News does it well and made us proud last weekend. From our dedicated teachers and administrators to secondary leadership team, security officers, and video production staff, I want to thank all of those folks who supported our graduates and ensured their success in our commencement ceremonies. The ceremonies, if you're interested, will be rebroadcast on Newport News TV. The schedule is available on our website, and families may also view the ceremonies on demand on the Telecom YouTube channel. So, on June seventh, we held our final elementary engineering design challenge of the year, titled Dream Builders, which was presented by James River Architects. Second and third-grade students from each elementary school were challenged to design and build a structure for their client using Legos and other provided materials. Congratulations to the architectural teams from Haydenwood, Palmer, Sanford, and Yates Elementary Schools. They were all named first-place winners. We also would like to congratulate our Odyssey of the Mind team from Woodside High School, who competed in the world finals last month. Out of fifty-one teams, this was a tough competition, our Woodside team placed twenty-first overall. That's twenty-first in the world. Congratulations. And congratulations to the students and staff at Deer Park Elementary School and Nelson Elementary School. Both schools earned two thousand nineteen Virginia Index of Performance Awards for exceeding excellence goals established by the governor and the Board of Education. Deer Park earned the Virginia Board of Education Excellence Award, the second-highest honor in the V I P program, and Nelson earned the Virginia Board of Distinguished Achievement Award. The schools will be recognized at our September school board meeting. I was honored to participate in the Elementary Star Awards Program last week, and that was a very fun event, which showcased many of the wonderful community service and kindness projects that our elementary students participate in each year. For me, this was a great opportunity to emphasize to our students and parents the importance of being a good person of character and a contributor to society. So, thank you to all the elementary schools for presenting, and I definitely encourage anyone who has not participated, attended a STAR program, awards program, to come out and support. Last but not least, I want to thank all of our students, parents, and staff for a successful school year. We're looking forward to a productive summer of learning with our Spark and Step Partners, who have committed to working with our students to provide a learning environment and job readiness opportunities this summer. Have a safe and happy summer, and students, don't forget to check out the summer reading recommendations on the Newport News Public School website, or visit your local library. Okay? Or visit your local library. Thank you, and this concludes my comments for this evening, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Dr. Parker. So, at this time, we have item number six point oh one. Any more? Do we have any cards from the public? There being none, we'll move on to item number seven, matters by the school board. Ms. Jones, you are up. Your last go-round.
Wow. Something feels different about, you know, giving the last comments that I'll give. I'm tearing up a little bit, on the inside, though. I just want to really thank not only the school board for this year, but Newport News for all five years I've been in the school system, and here come the tears. I moved here, well, my family and I, we moved here the summer before my seventh-grade year, where I attended Dozier Middle School in seventh grade, congratulations, by the way, to the new principal, and Gilder sleep eighth grade, and from the minute I was thrown into the school system, I was fortunate enough to be surrounded by teachers and faculty and staff who continued to see the best in me and continued to see things in me that I didn't even, I didn't even see. I didn't even, I didn't even see, and I just, wow, this is hard, this is hard, I just, um, I really thank you guys, I really do. And there's a couple people in the audience specifically I would like to thank, Ms. Bridgette Adams. Ms. Adams, she's, she's been amazing since the minute she grabbed me in her clutches, she hasn't let me go, and honestly, if it wasn't for her, I don't think I'd be sitting here today, because she really pushed me to get here, and Ms. Gerald, too, from Heritage, I didn't go to Heritage, but I met her looking for high schools, and since that moment, she's, she's, she never let me go, and she's been one of my biggest role models, and I just, everybody else, I mean, I've had teachers and just, I just, I have so much thanks and so much appreciation for what Newport News Public Schools did to me and for what they fostered in me and what they, what you guys have allowed me and have shown me to believe that I can do, and it really, because of you guys, thank you. Because of you guys, I'm moving on to a lot better things, and I'm seeing that I can move on to a lot better things. Now that, wow, so that, just thank you guys so much. Yeah, I'm going to miss you guys, but I'll be back, I'll be back. You guys haven't lost, you haven't lost me yet, I'm actually interning for Spark this year, which is another amazing program, so. You'll see me there, and just like Dr. Hunt, like Mr. Hunter says, great things are happening in Newport News. And I'd really, I'd also like to thank my mom, sitting in the audience videotaping. It's hard being a single parent with four children, and my mother has continued to show me that no matter how difficult things can get or how tired you can be, there's always, you, you can always work harder and you can always continue, because if you stop, then that's how you, you, you don't go forward, and she's shown me that anything is possible if you're dedicated and you work hard enough. And I just, I can't, I can't thank her enough, I can't thank her enough, because of everything that she's shown me, that's the biggest reason I'm sitting here today. I remember in elementary school, she, as a kid, when I got in trouble, a lot of kids take, get, get their games taken away, or they can't watch TV, I was the kid who got the books taken away, because I read so much. So it's because of, it's because of that, that I'm sitting here, I just, I have so much thanks and so much appreciation for the things that the school district has done. So thank you guys, thank you so much.
Ms. Simons?
Well, I just want to say congratulations to all of our wonderful graduates. I'm so excited for your futures, and I, I would just have to say, don't be afraid to try something new, don't be afraid to innovate, don't be afraid of failure sometimes, you know? As Denzel Washington said, you all have the talent to go out and have success, but do you have the guts to fail? So don't forget that trying new things and you're not always going to succeed, but take chances and help us solve the world's problems.
That's it, okay. Ms. Earl's Law?
Well, I want to congratulate the graduating class of 2019. What an impressive group of students, and it was a joy, it being my first year on the board, to see the process complete. My mom was a university president to universities, and I always wondered why there was just, at the end of graduation, this just sense of fulfillment that I saw in her, because she knew what it took to get those students across that stage, and I think I got the chance to see that this year, and it is a very rewarding experience. We can't do it without the support, though, the administrators and the teachers to get those students where they need to be, and definitely the parents, you know, hats off. You have to do it, it is our charge, and we're just going to move forward and keep doing the same thing even as they're outside of our homes. This board, I have thoroughly enjoyed my first year, I think I will stay. I encourage everyone to have a productive and enriching summer, do something fun, do something new, come back rejuvenated, and let's do this again.
Okay, well, thank you. Dr. Best?
Good evening, everyone. I, too, had an opportunity to participate in graduations for Newport News Public Schools. When I realized that I would be attending six high school graduations, I would be lying if I said I was very excited, but that was part of the job that I signed up for and that you elected me to represent, so I had to be there. But I must say that it was one of the best weekends, and that's how long it took, the entire weekend, ever spent to celebrate with the students, to see the joy of the parents, to see the positiveness in the students and, and the, the way that they feel about their futures, the, the staff, you're doing a fantastic job in Newport News Public Schools, so it was just a pleasure, honor, and I'm proud to be a part of that, and I'm also a proud parent of a graduate. And to the staff, I have friends that are still in the division, so I have, you know, some friends, they're saying, well, teachers are out, and I know, you know, they're relaxing. No, the friends that I have, they're actually preparing, they have a short break, and they're preparing to receive the babies in a short couple of weeks, so it never, it never stops, and we'd like to thank you all, teachers and staff, for that as well. Parents, please remember to take advantage of every opportunity to enrich your child over the summer, continue having them to read and, and to talk about getting along and problem solving, and just, you know, continue those things like that. Just like Mrs. Earl's Law said, this, too, was my first year on school board, I have learned so much, the time has gone by so fast, but it's something that I take very, very seriously, and again, I thank you all for your belief in me, I thank you staff and students and parents for sharing, and I'm continuing to learn and will continue to try to do the best job that I can. I wish everyone a safe and a restful summer, if you do get a break, to rest just a little bit. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Best, and congratulations to your daughter. Mr. Harris?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm actually getting choked up, I really am, seriously. Yes, it was a wonderful weekend during the graduations. You saw all the energy and you experienced something that most folks won't experience, especially from where we're sitting at. You literally felt the energy in, in the place, and I want to, you know, give a congratulations to all of the graduating students, all of the family members that made it happen, because no one can get any place by themselves, so appreciate that very much. And special thanks to Ms. Jones, you raised a wonderful young lady. It reminds me of myself, I, my mother was a single parent of four kids, and, and she may have been one of the toughest human beings I ever, you know, known, because she chose not to let her kids fail at anything, so she drove us pretty hard. And to Ms. Jones, I have three grown daughters now, and they're telling me not to lecture all the time, but, you know, I feel I have to, but I just, I just want to leave you with some, with some parting words, because you have a, you have a lot of responsibility, and normally, when you go through life, it is not for, or when you succeed, it is not for what you have done, but what you are preparing to do. So life is a continuum of, of accomplishments, okay? First thing you need to take with you is don't ever forget your loyalty to your friends, family, and to the profession that you plan on choosing. Duty, ensuring that whatever you do, you do it to the best of your ability, what we call be, know, and do. Respect, always have respect for yourself, the people you represent, your family, your community, and respect is earned, it is not given. Selfless service, we all, I guess, there's some people that find it hard to serve others, but it is a rewarding endeavor, and if you put other people first, or you put people's feelings first, you will always be rewarded, okay? Honor, at the end of the day, your name is everything, okay? Protect it, protect it fiercely, all right? Integrity, do the right thing, do the, select the hard right over the easy wrong. You headed to Howard University, which is a great institution, my son graduated from there. You're going to experience things in life that is going to test your integrity, but just remember to choose the hard right over the easy wrong, and things will work out. Personal courage, having three combat tools, everyone gets scared about something. Don't be afraid to embrace your fears, understand that it is part of life, and it is part of growing up. Also have physical and moral courage, and those things will be tested, so just remember what your mother has taught you, what friends and families have taught you, and I, I know for sure you will be successful. So that is my lecture of the day, and I'm sure, I'm sure my daughters will call me and let me know about it, but again, thank you, thank you for all your service, I really appreciate it, okay? You're welcome.
Mr. Vice Chair, Mr. Brown?
Yes, thank you, and I, too, had just a fantastic weekend at graduation. As I always say, that is probably my favorite part of the job, is attending graduation weekend, and my hats off, hats off to the administration and to all the families, putting on such a fantastic set of graduations. We, as we always hear, the Hampton Coliseum staff talks about how wonderful our staff is to work with, and how organized and, and a well-orchestrated graduation that we do put on. So it was wonderful to attend, and I wanted you to know, Ms. Jones, that you have really represented yourself well, and that you have set a great example. I'm always excited, especially when a student is selected from my district, but as well, you are selected from the same high school that my own children attend, and so whether you realize it or not, you've already been an example. My kids are excited to follow you and have watched you and, and watched the example you set, and seen school board meetings and seen the questions that you've asked, so you've had an impact on lots of students who are looking up to you, lots of people in the community who look up to you, and so I know that you're going to go on to do impressive and great things. The big thing that, because you're, you're in my district, that means that you're one of my students, that means that you have to come back. Okay? So you, you need, you need to come back, because we need to hear from you, we need to know how Newport News Public Schools has prepared you for college. The students who, in my district, okay, my student representatives, so my student representatives have consistently come back over the years and come to speak at the school board meetings. So when you go on break from, from school, come on down here, you don't need to fill out a card, right? We'll let you, we'll let you come down. We'll let you come down and, and speak on your experiences and how Newport News has prepared you. It encourages the entire board and the community, and every time we have a student come back, and so your voice is, is in particular, you are enlisted for life, okay, in being a representative, so you're not just a student representative for this short period of time that you have been, you're a student representative for life, you always represent all the students, and so we need your voice, and please continue to, to speak up on behalf of students. It's important that you started something great, all right? Please continue that. And to the graduating class of 2019, I've already shared, you know, my favorite sheet is always looking at the, looking at the data, looking at the statistics for the class, so I'm excited to hear at the end of the summer, we're going to get our report on what our, where accreditation is and where our graduation rates are, and so I'm, I'm expecting there's going to be fantastic, great things coming from the class. We've already seen it was over, it was thirty-eight percent of the class at a three-point-oh or above GPA, graduating with three-point-oh or above GPA. As Ms. Simon already mentioned, that is in addition to taking things like honors, like ninety percent of our students are getting an honors or an AP class in their, in their secondary school studies. Kids are doing CTE certifications, so they're getting Career and Technical Education certifications, two thousand six hundred and ten. So with only seventeen hundred seniors, we're getting close to every single senior receiving a Career and Technical Education certification, two of them. So we've got every senior getting one, we're getting close to every senior getting two, and so I'm looking forward to that day, perhaps the graduating class of 2020 is going to reach that mark, so 2019, you've already set a very high bar, because it was just a few short years ago that we were less than one CTE, Career and Technical Certification per student, and now we're over, we're close to one-point-five this year. So we continue to prosper in doing big and great things, over fifty million dollars in scholarships, I think that's the largest total that I've ever seen since I've been sitting up here, of, of students receiving merit scholarships for college. That's economic empowerment, then we talk about changing the face of a community, that's economic empowerment, that's really empowering our entire community and, and lifting, lifting our economy in, in great ways. So I'd be remiss if I, mentioning that, if I didn't also talk about the business that 's to remain coming up. So the job of school board kind of never ends, we roll from one thing right into another, even though this is the end of a, a great school year and with great things have happened, it is time to focus on our capital improvement budget. So we just got through focusing on our operating budget, it's now time to focus on the capital budget, and I would be remiss if I did not mention the challenges that are ahead of us, and I, I want to place on the board the burden, that is, it is our burden to make sure that when we come to the table to talk about our capital needs, that we talk about all of the needs, and we have, we have focused, and rightly, rightfully so, on getting Huntington replaced and rebuilt, that needs to be job one, but getting Huntington replaced and rebuilt, getting a new Huntington School, that will not solve all of the capital needs that we have, and we have much, much more. And we've been talking about this for a number of years, and we've talked about this with a number of boards, so let's, let's resolve that this is the board that solves that problem. All right, so you've heard me allude to, and of course, I had to look it up, because this was something that previous boards worked very hard to get, which was, we did a comprehensive facility study, and it was presented to the board back in 2017, and we dubbed it the Mosley Architecture Study, because that was the firm that did the independent review, looked at soup to nuts, as they say, all of our buildings and did a full assessment, and at that time, in 2017, they recommended that we replace, overdo over sixty-three million dollars in replacements of our learning cottages. And that was before we had all the, we talked, we started seeing all the issues that we have with school safety in terms of learning cottages and getting those, school hardening that needs to be done, the over sixty-three million dollars in learning cottages replacements were identified, so this is not just the learning, this is not just all the learning cottages, these are the ones that were falling apart at the time, sixty-three million dollars in replacing those, those learning cottages, so work that needed to be done needs to be done, and we have to ask ourselves a question as a board, so in 2017, did we get sixty-three million dollars to replace those learning cottages? No, we didn't. So they didn't get any buildings, you know, they don't, they don't age better, they get worse as time goes on. It's 2019 now. At that time, it was, the, the study identified that Riverside, Sedgfield, and Huntington, as well as Dozier, Warwick, and in Yates Elementary School, all needed major, either major renovation or complete overhaul. Okay, out of that set, one of those schools has already been, seen conditions that were so unsafe that we had to shut them down. All right, so I want to make sure that as we come to the table, that we have a full comprehensive view, and Achievable Dream Elementary School is on that, on that list as well, that we have a full comprehensive view, and we take a sober look at all of the buildings and all the sites that really need that serious revitalization or replacement, because at that time, that was close to a quarter of a billion dollars needed for those buildings. And did we get a quarter of a billion dollars in 2017 for replacement of those buildings? That's not, that's not in addition to the sixty-three million dollars that I already mentioned for the learning cottage replacement, and that's not in addition to the seventy-six million dollars that was identified for immediate capital projects that needed to be done to keep the buildings in shape. So did we get that funding in 2017? And no, we didn't. So this is the year, this is the time, we talked about, we had a resolution today, talk about long-range planning, but it's more than just long-range planning, because we have immediate planning right now, we have immediate, urgent, drastic needs that need to come to the table now, today. Otherwise, we're going to, otherwise, we're going to be in really dire straits. So I know I'm always the, I'm always the killjoy, but I'd be remiss if we didn't, if we didn't lay this out and, and talk about it. So as we come to the table, as we frame discussions, we need to frame the entire discussion of the full gamut of what needs to be done, because it won't be enough to just get Huntington and then be, turn around in another situation where we're shutting down another school, and then another school, and then another school, and then another school, because as I mentioned, I'll mention them again, Achievable Dream Elementary School, Riverside Elementary School, Sedgfield Elementary School, Yates Elementary School, Dozier Middle School, Huntington Middle School, Warwick High School, were all on the list in 2017 of schools that needed immediate attention, or they were going to be in dire straits. And, and I want people to know about this study now, it's because it's not a, it's not a secret, but maybe, you know, we, we haven't put this out to the public enough or publicized enough. but maybe, you know, we haven't put this out to the public enough or publicized enough what was in the study, this is not, because it's not a secret, this is something that, this is a train, you know, the, the lights in that tunnel and the train is barreling down and it's going choo, choo, choo and, and this should be bang, banging, keeping you up at night, that this train is rolling down that track, that this is serious. And so I wanted to press that upon the board and I hope that we, we do take that up and make sure that all of our needs are in the capital budget because that is our job, is to make sure that all of these needs are in the capital budget. And I'll tell people the whole price tag, they cited in the study was half a billion dollars of what was needed, okay? So let's make sure that when we put together our capital budget, that all of our needs are in it because you can't, you can't start with this little bit and then try to go to the, go to this next lot. We need to get to all of the things that need to be done and let's be the board that takes on that responsibility and make sure it happens so that future children in, in the division, we get to where the division really needs to be so we have the facilities that, that represent Newport News. All right, and I'm done.
Thank you, Vice Chair Brown. And it brings me to the close again. Great things are happening in Newport News this year. I think we had a wonderful school year. Again, congratulations to our, the Community Captain Program. I think that's, there's nothing like it, I think, in the surrounding area. So kudos to Dr. Parker and seeing you and Mr. Triple for, for that partnership. Again, congratulations to Ms. Jones. We're going to miss you. You've, sometimes I turn to the right and find out who's really, is that Dr. Best talking? Is that Dr. Jones? Again, the selection committee for our students, this is five years in a row and every year we get another student representative is even better than the one before. So the person, he's got some big shoes to fill. So again, congratulations and good luck at the other HU. But I'm quite sure that school would fit you and I know you would do great things there happening. I'd be remiss if I didn't congratulate my wife, hey, how you watching? Riverside Elementary School who had their career day and I did participate in that. So shout out to Riverside Elementary School for inviting me. Had a wonderful day talking to fourth and fifth graders, yes, third and fourth graders and some fifth graders, so it was a wonderful day. To our graduates, I have no doubt that you will be successful. Life is all about changes, chances and opportunities. So never leave anything to chance and never let an opportunity get away. Barack Obama once told some graduates that, don't just get involved, fight for a seat at the table. Better yet, fight for the seat at the head of the table. So my final words of advice to our recent graduates would be, this is your life, be the change agent for others. In class, for those who are continuing their education in college or two-year college or in the military or in some trade school, you know, sit toward the front of the room and not in the back. Be a positive role model for our brothers and our sisters. Take the lead in the project or in the report. Participate in discussion, your opinion needs to be heard. Be on time and be prepared, be honest and keep your integrity. Assist others whenever you get an opportunity and get the change. And when you get to the top, I know you will, please remember to send that elevator back down to help someone else to get where you are today. So stay focused and you will be successful. So to our, so to our graduates, congratulations on your growth and your journey and best wishes for a prosperous future. That said, I will conclude our meeting tonight, thank you.